Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the August 2019 Wallingford Board of Education Meeting. I'd ask you to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Lavelle, can I have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Thanks.
Mrs. Kelly?
Here.
Mrs. Corso?
Here.
Ms. Lavelle?
Here.
Mrs. McKay?
Here.
Mrs. Purcell?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Mrs. Raccio?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Votto?
Here.
Nine members present and voting.
Perfect, thank you. Item four, Student Board Reps. Obviously, we're still in summer mode, which will be changing very quickly in less than 24 hours, so we don't have any board reps. But I just want to take one second before we dive into our agenda, and on behalf of the Board, I just want to say, Dr. Menzo, get better quick. We miss you tonight. The chair is, well, it's been filled, but it's, it's just been removed temporarily. But no, we miss you terribly, and we want you to get well and come back to us and follow doctor's orders. So that's my mommy hat. And I also just want to take a second and welcome Jim Bondi, our new Food Service Director, officially, and have fun. Enjoy. Welcome, and we're really happy you're with us, so, thank you. So, Presentation and Awards. This is Latour.
So, at this time, I'd like to invite Roxanne, you down, so that we have a special presentation. Dr. Menzo usually has a handheld, so I'll just stand here for one second. We're recognizing this evening Rachel Holden, Connecticut Teacher Turned the Key Award Recipient from the Connecticut Association of Agricultural Educators. I'd also like to invite Rebecca Rose and Joe Corso up, please, at this time.
We're using the mic because it's on TV. It should be. My mentor once told me that you have to decide if and when to stop fixing the ship and when to actually sail the ship. When I started in my position five years ago as Director of the Regional Agri-science Program at Lyman Hall, the Food Science Program was still in the stage of fixing the ship. By my third year, we were looking for our second new instructor, not because anything was wrong with the ship, but due to other positive changes in the department, and we needed to hire for food science once again, and that was just the way the cookie crumbled. I thought for sure that we would spend many more years fixing the ship in food science. And then we hired Rachel. Didn't take long before Rachel was sailing the ship, and not just a little rowboat, but a massive cruise liner with an endless itinerary and happy passengers. Rachel works tirelessly to put the science into food science, and you would never know that she was only starting her third year of teaching. If you look in her classroom during the school year, you can see students generating dodecahedron displays to illustrate foodborne pathogens. Stop by in the summer, and you see a guest scientist, who's a former researcher for Harvard, Duke, and Yale, teaching our students how to use a spectrophotometer to analyze the protein content of various forms of milk. As a previous recipient of the Teacher Turned the Key Award, and I'll let you politely assume that it was very recently, I can attest to the caliber of recipients that are selected by each state and the level of competition that ensues. Rachel will be an exceptional representative of our act program, our school district, our state, and our profession at the National Conference in a few months. I'm proud to have Rachel as my colleague and lucky to have her as my friend.
You'll have to keep us posted how things turn out, Rachel, for you. Okay, item 5.2 is the presentation of the Facility Study Survey Results. So we've got Malone and McBroom, our representatives. Come on up. Welcome.
Thank you.
You're a solo act tonight, huh?
Hi, again, Rebecca Auger, Principal Planner with Malone and McBroom, and I'm here to talk through the survey results on the middle and high school restructuring study, which hopefully you have a package at your seat.
Yes.
Just a refresher on the background of this survey. It comes at the end of the study that has been ongoing for several months, looking at the middle and high schools and planning for their future. You selected three scenarios to present to the public in this survey and really just test the waters on the direction you should head in the future. So the survey was conducted online from May through July. It was promoted widely through email, community organizations, local newspapers, and social media. School district staff also made hard copies available, and they input those responses to the online instrument as they could. And there was an online version available in Spanish as well. So to jump right into the results, we had 2,294 complete responses. We did get partial responses of another couple hundred. Most of those answered the key question on which scenario they preferred, but opted not to answer some of the other questions. The vast majority of respondents were Wallingford residents, and you can see that in the pie chart on the upper right, where 55% of all respondents lived on the east side of Wallingford, 39% lived on the west side. This is actually a pretty good breakdown of the community, where 57% of the town's total population lives on the east side, and of all the residents that took the survey, 58% said they lived on the east side. So it's fairly representative of the community. That 9% of others that took the survey were largely teachers or staff of the community or other neighboring community residents. When asked what the relationship to Wallingford Public Schools is, respondents were able to pick more than one answer. So on the lower right chart, you may be wondering why those percentages add up to more than 100. A slim majority of respondents have children either in the system now or will soon have children in the system. Yet another quarter of respondents indicate that they were a student at one time or that they have children that were students at one time. So most survey takers had some direct connection to the school system. And a lot of the other responses, I should make note, indicated that they were grandparents of current students. So just a little bit more on respondents and their demographics. We felt like it was a fairly reasonable representation of the community in terms of the age profile. What this chart is showing you is the total population of the community in the outer ring as it's broken down by age profile and the age profile of respondents of the survey in the inner ring. So what's important to note is that 16% of the town's population is under the age of 18, and we don't necessarily expect that population to take a survey. So when you see, you know, 4% were only under the age of 18, that kind of skews this inner ring. However, we felt like it was pretty representative in that, you know, you have 17% of the town's population between 45 and 54, and they were 26% of survey takers. Likewise, you just compare the colors to compare that. The 65-plus age group was a little bit underrepresented. The 35- to 54-year-old age groups were a little bit overrepresented. Before we asked about their preference in terms of the scenarios, we asked about some personal values or priorities for planning for the middle schools and then for the high schools. So starting with the middle schools, we gave a series of options on what are the most important factors to consider in planning. With educational programming, 21st century teaching, facilities, conditions, costs, the reputation of the school system as it relates to property values, traditions or rivalry, and accessibility to athletics and extracurriculars. And you can see that the priorities for the middle schools were overwhelmingly towards educational programming and teaching and facilities conditions. That is represented by that blue and orange bar. And on this chart, in the highest bar represents most important, and it proceeds down to least important on the lowest bar. So 86% ranked educational programming as either their number one or number two priority. And 64% ranked facilities conditions as either number one or two. As far as what was least important, 60% ranked traditions as least important. Same question for the high schools. Again, educational programming ranked very high. 79% ranked it as either the number one or number two priority, a little bit lower than for the middle schools. And then 57% ranked facilities conditions as number one or number two priority, a little bit lower than the middle schools again, and really that's as a result of traditions, which is shown in the black, taking up a little bit more on the higher portions of the graph. In terms of the least important for the high schools, not as clear a winner here, but 52% did rank the reputation of the schools as they relate to property values as least important. And then the scenarios were presented, and again, just to refresh everyone's memory, scenario number one was to execute the three-year maintenance plan. Scenario number two is to renovate as new all four existing buildings, the two middles and two highs. Scenario three was to renovate as new the two middle schools and consolidate the high schools into one renovated high school. Scenario two was the most preferred, but at 44%. Scenario three was the second most, at 35%, and scenario one was preferred by 21%. And to dig into the responses, we also ran comparisons by various population groups or demographic groups within the survey respondents to determine any statistically significant differences by groupings. All of those comparisons were based on a 95% confidence interval, meaning that there's a 5% chance that that significant difference was caused either by a sampling error or just by chance. So some of those comparisons are in the following slides. We looked at the preferences of respondents based on their, where they live, and as you can see, there's no overwhelming bias. However, there were some statistically significant differences, and you can kind of see that in this chart. So these are east side residents on the left-hand side, and the yellow represents their percentage of all responses, and then the colors represent scenario one, scenario two, and scenario three. And you can see it's a bit higher in the scenario three for east side residents than you might expect based on their overall percentage. And indeed, there was a statistically significant difference there. However, there weren't many others based on geographic location. We also compared based on relationship to the school system. And again, respondents were able to choose more than one as far as what their relationship is to the schools. So those who chose scenario two were more likely to be parents of current or future students, and that is represented in this third section in, where you can see scenario two is bumped up relative to the other scenario choices or their overall response. Respondents who chose scenarios one and three were more likely not to have a direct relationship with the schools, and you can see that over here. And then respondents who chose scenario three were less likely to be teachers or staff. We looked at the scenario choices by age, and you can see that shown here. Scenario one was more popular with those age 55 or older, and you can see that as the blue bar in the last two groupings. Scenario two was more popular with those between the ages of 35 and 45, 44, excuse me, and scenario three was also more popular with those age 55 and over.
For one and three.
I'm sorry?
Fifty-five plus for one.
You want to speak in the mic?
Yes, scenarios one and three were both more popular with those age 55 and over. There were some follow-up questions as to why a respondent chose the scenario they did, so digging into those a little bit. This is presenting those who preferred scenario one. That was their choice. That's about 500 people. And as to why they didn't choose scenario two, renovating all four buildings, a lot of, a lot of people talked about costs or indicated cost was a significant reason at 86% of those. And as far as why they didn't choose scenario three, it also was costs. However, there was a lot of write-in responses as well, scenario three with concern over having one high school. I should also say that on scenario two, there were some concerns as well over declining enrollment in general. Again, scenario one, respondents who preferred scenario one were more likely to be 55-plus, and the values that they had indicated in terms of those planning priorities were generally the costs, and they were more likely to have ranked that as a very high priority for themselves, and they were less likely to have ranked educational programming as a high priority. Those who preferred scenario two, when asked why didn't they choose scenario one, facilities conditions and educational programming were significant reasons. And again, this was the most preferred scenario of the respondents, just over 1,000 responses. Some of the write-in comments for scenario one as to why they didn't choose it were regarding that it's a Band-Aid approach that was actually mentioned several times, and that it didn't advance the system. As to why they didn't choose scenario three, there was a lot of write-in responses here. Actually, it was the most, 45% indicated other. And again, it came down to a concern over one high school, and a lot of concerns around that in terms of class sizes, transportation, potential overcrowding in the future, traffic at one high school, and just general opposition to, and concerns over the accessibility to athletics and extracurricular activities. Those who chose scenario two were, again, most likely between the ages of 35 and 54, or I should say it was most popular with that age group, and they were statistically more likely to rank educational programming and facilities as a top priority.
I'm sorry, could I get that age group again, Rebecca?
35 to 54. And I should phrase it as it was most popular amongst that age group. And those who preferred scenario three, as to why they didn't choose scenario one, facilities conditions and educational programming, again, very high reasoning for not choosing scenario one, and there were, again, write-in responses as far as scenario one being a Band-Aid approach to issues. As to why they didn't choose scenario two, costs was a primary reason cited, and this group was less likely to rank cost as a top three priority in those earlier personal values and planning priorities. So they remain true to their original reasoning. So that is a brief summary.
Do we know what age group preferred scenario three?
So scenario three was more popular among the 55-plus age group as far as having a statistically significant difference among age groups. But if I go back, you'll see that really all responses attracted, you know, preference from all age groups.
Gotcha. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Pat, did you want to?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment on the, I think it's page eight, preference by residents, and there was that big disparity between the east side and west side as far as, I wonder if it's based on the assumption that people on the west, east side probably feel that if there's one high school, it'll probably be Lyman Hall.
And that, that is how it was presented.
I've been hearing people, so I'm wondering if that's why you saw that weighting on the east side versus the west side. Because you haven't really said which high school.
Yeah, we did.
It was presented as.
No, we did, actually.
No, no, it's because she and Lanscape were on the count.
Yeah, so actually, Pat, we have identified it.
Yeah, okay.
So yes, I believe that is why that was higher. So just a brief conclusion, I think one of the main takeaways is that there is desire for investment in facilities, with 80% of those responding supporting some kind of significant investment. However, that investment, and that investment was supported across demographic groups. While there were some differences between age groups, you found support amongst all age groups for scenarios two and three. But there is a split in whether, you know, in the costs versus maintaining two high schools. What also is, I think, important and significant coming out of the survey is that educational programming was ranked very high, very consistently across many demographic groups, and I think that offers you an opportunity to clarify your path forward in terms of, you know, developing a very robust educational strategy and how those facilities enhance and enable that strategy to come to fruition. However, it really will need to be balanced with the cost concerns that are evident in the survey as well. So with that.
I know Mike has a question, and any other board members? I'll take you into you.
I would like to find out, do we go by the number of voters in town, age 18 and over, to get a percentage or just the 2,294, just take that as a percentage of the total population? What I'm trying to get at is the percentage of respondents.
So your total population is just under 45,000. We do have almost 200 responses from out-of-towners who still have a relationship to the school system through staff positions, so it's a little bit, oftentimes with surveys, you might rate it based on a household percentage. How many households did you hit?
And how many households?
I don't remember off the top of my head. I apologize, I can't find that out.
So we do take this number as a percentage of the total population of the town, not just 18 and over?
Well, I would want it to be 18 and over. I wouldn't want to include kids that certainly had no.
People under 18 have filled out this.
Some, yes.
Some, right?
Not, not that many. I think it was about 100.
How many?
I think about 100.
That's significant.
Well, not really. Almost 2,300, actually more with partials.
It's a low percentage regardless. It is, it's a low percentage when you think of 45,000, and we only got 2,000.
What is an average? Rebecca, what do you see as an average?
A good survey?
Yeah.
Is 10% of the population.
10% of the population.
Which could, is often measured at a different level than total.
So we don't know that, because you're thinking it's more on households than actual population.
You may also be thinking on, in terms of the number of students you have, how many families that is. There would be many ways of measuring this.
Any other questions from board members? So I think, just to clarify for next steps, Dr. Menzo, Mr. Barone, Mr. Votto, and myself went up to Hartford and met with Hartford representatives about our options, and we want to obviously share that information with the Board, which will be done at the Operations Meeting. And I think, Mr. Barone, even, we, I don't know where we stand with it, but we invited a state person to join us at that meeting, to be there, to answer questions, and just to understand the state's perspective of these three options and what it looks like from the state in terms of how they would support or would or would not support, and percentages of what they can support, and so on and so forth. So, I don't know, Mr. Barone, if you have any updates, do we have a commitment there?
We don't have a commitment yet.
We don't have a commitment yet, so, but we will be definitely presenting the information that we garnered at that meeting at our operations. Whether the state is there or not, we will definitely be presenting that information. Yeah, Mr. Ross?
Who would decide, what department in the state did you meet with?
Oh, gosh, what's the exact title? And do you remember? It was a construction.
They've changed names, like, some of the names recently.
But it, it's the department that really does oversee the whole funding process for towns, for communities, in terms of what you're eligible for. They oversee all those parameters. So they're really, they were important people to speak to, to understand what their perception was of these options. Now, obviously, option one, there's no state refund, because that's not, we know that. So it's, the focus of the conversation was really on option two and three, obviously, so.
Thank you.
Yep, sure. Yes, Patty?
I just wanted to remind people that there are copies of everything we just saw here so that they can take them, I guess, after.
Sure, absolutely. And I believe it'll be on our website as of tomorrow.
I think so.
Yeah, yeah, so, so we all know this is a process, and we're still gathering, you know, information at a very, very, very high level, and, you know, I think it's important for the community, the town council, eventually we will be presenting to the town council and the mayor, especially to understand the counterbalance of state participation and what that may look like. So those are all very important components, so those, I think, will be next steps. And the goal tonight was truly informational from the consultant. No decisions on any level were being made tonight. I want to make sure people are perfectly clear. To read our agenda, it tells it's just a presentation of information, so there was no thought of voting or anything like that this evening. So I don't know, I'll open it up one more time to board members, any questions? And what I'll do, just want to make sure I give you time. So our next item is actually questions and answer period from the audience, so I guess I would open it up also right now to the audience. Any general questions you may have for the Board of Ed, but if there are any specific ones you might want to ask about the presentation this evening, this is your golden opportunity. So I would, and if you could come up to the mic, just give us your name and address, that would be great. Hi, Rajan.
Rajan Dearing of 48 Sharon Drive. There is reference throughout the presentation to concern about the costs of these options. I presume this is referring to the one-time cost of pursuing these options. Is there any indication as to long-term whether these would be more expensive or less expensive than each other?
You know, I think the, I don't want to speak for you, but I think the answer is those, those are a deeper dive. Once we kind of figure out where the direction is and the interests of the community, those are really important numbers and ideas that you want to, you want to get your arms around to understand reoccurring costs versus one-time costs, and all, you know, that all, the long-term, short, middle, and long-term, where are the savings? Rebecca, would you?
No, that's exactly it. That requires knowing a lot more about each option.
Right.
To ascertain.
Right. Thank you.
Yep, sure. Anything else from the audience? Okay, Rebecca, again, thank you so much for your presentation this eve, oh, I'm sorry, did you want to ask?
Not to her.
Come on out. Oh, absolutely. But, okay. Welcome.
Adeline Kopefer, 35, Whiffle Tree Road. I'm back with my favorite topic, the energy efficiency. I would love to hear in any further discussion how that topic will be integrated. I had basically three short questions for tonight. I was, number one, very pleased to hear that one of the oil tanks has not been replaced. That's great news. I was curious what will happen with the other four that are still.
I'm sorry, what was it replaced?
The oil tanks at the elementary schools.
Sorry.
Sorry, it's hard to judge how loud to speak. The second, I would love to hear an update on the audit, energy audit, that was announced, hopefully, to come soon. And then, number three, I just wanted to repeat the four questions I had in April to the Board. I can read them off or I can just hand out. I made copies this time. I would like to ask the Board. Um, I would like to ask the board, and that's been started, I understand, to ask for an energy audit. And then number two, to adopt a clear energy efficiency goal. For example, let's try and save 20% of our energy costs in the next so many years. Number three, request a comprehensive strategic plan to get to that goal. And number four, as I just mentioned, make sure any future updates and plans for elementary, middle and high schools will integrate these goals in this, this plan. Um, if you'd, I can leave the copies within one of you.
Please do. But, yeah, uh, you know what, well, I can take them.
And I'll make sure board members get them.
Perfect. Oh, perfect. Thank you. Okay, so Adelaide, I'm sorry, I, I, I understand you're for ongoing, uh, but I think what I heard was you were looking for specifically an update on the energy audit.
That was one of the three points, yes.
Okay.
And then the oil tanks, I don't know if Mr.
Yep, and I, I guess I would ask Mr. Dipula for the, uh, that's right, the oil tanks. I, I apologize about that. Updates on the oil tanks and the audit.
The, the four oil tanks will be replaced. There's no doubt about it. We have to have, maintain those to operate schools. If we don't have them, we'll have to close the schools down. Um, as far as the energy audit, uh, we do not have an update to share at this time. Uh, we, we are looking at basically right now, the beginning of the project will be a lighting project, which is badly needed. Uh, the last lighting project, uh, addressed, um, lights at that time. Unfortunately, uh, we were not able to update to LEDs because there were safety issues with LEDs at the time. So this project will address that and it'll be updated to brand-new LEDs and it will address both interior and exterior lighting.
And when do you see that going into place?
Uh, I think we'll, uh, probably initiate that this fall sometime and it will, it'll probably take, uh, a year of planning or so.
Okay. So, um, so before I, hold on, Mr. Ross, but, okay, so that was, uh, oil tanks, the energy audit, those were the two, what, I'm sorry, refresh my memory. Did you, you wanted an update on?
No, the updates, that was basically it.
Okay, those are the updates. I want to make sure I'm getting your points.
Uh, the other, the only other question regarding the oil tanks, I understand they have to be replaced now, but are there any, um, ideas, strategies, plans, efforts to maybe in the long midterm or long run, find a, a different way of heating the schools?
That will come after the energy audit. Um, and right now, we are, like I said, we are, we're looking at a lighting project. There are no plans right now to go beyond that, but we're constantly looking at these items. Um, as you know, the, uh, the list of items that I generated is quite extensive. There's probably some pie in the eye, pie in the sky items there. Um, I don't expect them all to be addressed, but they're, it's, it's a platform for ideas and we will be looking at, at all of those eventually. But right now, initially, it will be a lighting project.
Thank you. Mr. Ross?
I, I'm, I'm a little confused here. Uh, the energy audit, uh, can you explain, is that in the process? Will that be start, is that an independent audit? Uh, I'm hearing your response to the energy audit that we're replacing lights, but are we going to have a, a company come in and do an audit on our energy needs and uses or what?
Yes, and that'll be an independent audit by an outside firm. The details have not been worked out, but we've done this in the past. It's nothing new to the, uh, you know, Wallingford Public School System. Um, I, I know of at least, um, two energy audits and two energy projects that were done in the last, um, I think 12 years, maybe 13 years, but we do have a track record of doing those projects, along with all the hundreds of small projects we do. When we update any piece of equipment, we always look at the next generation or the next most efficient piece of equipment. That applies to every, every rotating load and every, uh, fuel burning, uh, device like water heaters, storage tanks. The vast majority of the storage in the system has been replaced. So in some, in most cases, we've replaced, uh, 1,000 gallon storage tanks with, uh, 80 to 150 gallon, uh, normally gas-fired water heaters, sometimes oil-fired, depending on whether gas is available. So these are, these are items that we commonly address on a regular basis.
So we have a outside firm that will come in and do the audit or we do it ourselves?
We will not do it ourselves. It will be an outside firm.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, come on.
Good evening, Larry Morganstein, South Main Street. Uh, follow-up on the oil tanks. Are any of those tanks going into the schools that are possibly being renovated?
No, they're not.
Okay, so that.
Grade schools this year, the next year, you will see, um, possibly high school tank, you will see two high school tanks next year that need to be replaced.
Yeah, so that leads me to my question. Is it really wise to be pushing a technology that really we have a chance, if we're going to renovate these schools and bring it into the 21st century, not only in education, but maybe in energy, doesn't it make sense to be taking this step when we have a chance to make it an LED building to be energy efficient? I don't think it really makes sense. Now, part of this long-term plan, as the last speaker talked about, especially with these schools, needs to be looked at long-term energy, that there's a lot of things going on. We won't get into the politics of that, but I'd be very concerned about putting expenditures towards oil tanks at schools that could be possibly redone from top to bottom. Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, Mark, refresh my memory, with it, with the energy audit, I mean, they just look at the existing heating cooling system and then go from there? I mean, what I'm getting at, and I'll just get right to the point, do they also do alternatives like geothermal, solar? Or is it just?
They'll, they'll look at that, but at this point, this is really, um, the beginning of this energy project, so it's going to focus on lighting. The audit, um, we haven't worked out the details, but I would like to see the audit look at mostly building automation beyond the lights, uh, because the automation will save us a lot of money and a lot of wasted fuel. Um, you know, uh, when you walk into a room and, uh, an air conditioner is running with nobody in it, that's a problem. If we have lights that stay on all night, that's a problem. Those things can all be tied into building automation and, um, we, we have automation systems right now, but they're really not up to snuff. Some of, some of it may be a little antiquated, even things like alarm handlers, central alarm handlers are invaluable be, because I can have one employee look at that for 15 minutes in the morning and know where all the alarms are in the district. Right now, we do not have that ability. Um, to, to look at alarms, you have to actually go into each section of a building and click on the rooms. And that is a time-consuming process. Uh, it can take eight hours a day to do that kind of work in a school system this big. So I really, um, would encourage you updating the, um, automation at the same time as the lighting, because that will give us instant savings, um, and instant improvements in operation. It will also, you know, help cut maintenance costs down right now because we, we don't have that ability. Thank you.
Okay, um, all right, with that, um, if I can get a motion to go into executive session for E1, discussion of acceptance of resignation?
So moved.
Second.
I have a first and second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. We're out of, uh, we're in executive session, sorry. Can I get a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second.
I have a first and second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. We're out of executive session. Our current, uh, agenda shows on our consent agenda, 7.1 through 7.5, um, I am going to recommend removing item 7.5 from the consent agenda. So with saying that, having said that, can I get a motion to accept consent agenda item 7.1 through 7.4?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
I have a first and second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Item eight, items removed from the consent agenda, well, we have one, and that is our approval of our new policy, 5131, uh, point 81, electronic devices. Um, yes, Mrs. LeVack?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, I had to ask that this be removed from the consent agenda because I had some concerns regarding the policy, um, namely two. Uh, first of all, we had a discussion in committee regarding the implementation of a regulation along with the policy and there was discussion about that. I'm just wondering where we are in the regulation process.
So, um, after the June board meeting, when that regulation was, um, proposed, Policy Committee met at the beginning of August to go over the details of said regulation and that will be presented for a first read at the Instructional Committee next week.
Uh, thank you on that. And the second, uh, issue I had is, um, in, in reviewing the policy once again, um, I know that I had a concern and I think it was shared by a couple of other board members, namely, uh, Mrs. Raciyo and perhaps Mr. Vado too, I don't recall, uh, about safeguarding the identity of, of certain students requiring technology use in their 504 or IDEA, um, plans and how we could not make that obvious. I don't know how else to, um, couch that. But, um, we certainly want to adhere to what the 504 or the IDEA plan indicates, but with this policy, we're asking other students not to utilize technology, whereas these students might need to utilize that technology because of, of certain issues and help that they may require. So I'm just, it's, it's a balancing act as to how we, you know, can safeguard those children's identities, but still fulfill, um, the things that they need educationally. So I don't know if any additional thought has been.
I think what, you know, usually or typically occurs anytime a child has, um, something that is written into their 504 or their IEP, it's discussed at a PPT, it's discussed with a case manager, how we can implement that item, whatever it is, um, in the most confidential, private way, recognizing that, um, if the child truly needs this to be successful, which occurs frequently throughout the classroom, um, it's not just with technology, it could be with a different type of chair or a different, you know, something on their desk that is what they need. Um, it is usually discussed, you know, how that's approached within the classroom. So, um, you know, that is, that is something that the PPT team or the 504 team would need to discuss and come up with a plan together to ensure that everybody's comfortable and confidentiality is maintained.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Vado, did you, you okay? Okay, uh, yeah, Mrs. Raciyo.
Thank you. Um, I do agree with that, Mrs. Latour. However, I think when we're talking about, um, cell phones, it's a universal tool, so we are really asking students who may need that tool, either through a 504 accommodation or through, um, a PPT and an IEP agreement, that they either, they need to choose. They're either having to choose to self-identify, where especially in middle school, if we're saying that students will not be able to use during passing or lunch, it's basically going to be for those who don't have the accommodation in their locker for the day. Um, and then I also fear for the students who don't want to self-identify and they may go without the technology that could actually help them. Um, so those are definitely concerns that I share with Mrs. LeVack. Um, and I also mentioned in the beginning of our, before the meeting started with Mrs. Latour, we had two reads of this, June 3rd and June 17th. Um, in the June 3rd read, and I know we've been flipping back and forth as to what was middle school, high school, elementary, um, I went back and I did review the, the meeting from that day and we did agree, it wasn't unanimous, it was 5-4, but we did agree to keep, in high school, we would allow students to use the technology during passing. And that seemed to slip from the last version or the two versions ago. It was in June 3rd and it's now out, so we need to revisit that, that meeting.
Yes, I shared prior, uh, at the start of the meeting when we were discussing that, I'd have to go back to my notes and look because it was out at the second read, the June 17th meeting, so I'd have to go back and look at my notes from the June 3rd meeting.
Yeah, Mr. Ross?
If that is the case, I think it's irrelevant because if we had a second reading and we kept it in and we put it back in, then that's the purpose of the second reading or subsequent readings. So, yeah, at the first reading, we probably did, we could have voted to keep it out, but then it should have been addressed at the second reading. Uh, I guess that's what we have to check is the second reading to see if we did put it back in there. I know as a member of the Policy Committee, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, you two, um, we agreed that in the passing in the, in the hallway, during passing time, they should not have it on. Uh, it becomes a very dangerous situation because as you know, you know, they're looking at their cellphone and not watching where they're walking and, uh, accidents do occur. I, I remember talking about that.
Yes.
Um, my other concern is the, Karen, as far as the IEP 504, um, the fact that it's mentioned in here, that's not what you're, what you're questioning. You're questioning if a child has to take out, if the IEP says.
Exactly. That's, that's my concern. I just don't, um, this is, we try to be, uh, obviously, we have to meet the needs of all of our students, including those that are identified under these two, um, areas, but, um, trying to be sensitive to that population.
I understand that, but I'm thinking, what other purpose, I mean, anything, whatever a phone, a phone could be used for many things, but I'm, I'm imagining, unless I just don't get it, what you're trying to say, is that, um, aren't there other devices that the children could use? They don't need a phone to research something or to, in other words, I don't know what purpose a phone would need, would need to be used unless they were teaching a child how to make a phone call, which probably could happen, but on that particular day, maybe the child can be taken to another place. I, I don't know. You're never going to.
I mean, there are so many students that have so many needs in our district that we're not, we don't know all of the things that might be mentioned in, in a 504 or an IEP that would meet their needs. I, I just want to make sure that those students have their identity protected.
You know, I don't think you could ever do that 100% with anything.
No, but I think, I think we need to be sensitive to the issue.
I think we could be sensitive, even if it's in the policy. I mean, I think we're sensitive to other things. I mean, uh, as a teacher, I had special education students in my class that got certain things that other kids did not get. And you had to very discreetly maybe do those things, maybe a word bank when they took a quiz or a test. And you pass that out to the, your special ed children or 504 or whatever who needed it, but you did it very discreetly. And I think it became, it's the way you handle it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I think that's an issue all the time. It's not going to be just with the phones. But I understand, I, I, I really don't see a purpose for using a phone for anything other than making a phone call unless you're teaching a child how to make a phone call.
Right.
Everything else that a phone does, you can do on a phone book.
There might be, there might be other things that they utilize it for. And so, uh, that's just something that I wanted to point out because I want to make sure that we're sensitive to that point.
Mrs. Castellan?
So Karen, I, I totally support everything you're saying, um, with, with respect to being sensitive to these, these, um, kids. But I'm thinking it probably is happening now. Uh, if, most teachers, I'm sure, do not want cell phones out during their class time. So if the, if the special needs kids are allowed to have their cellphone, it's already happening today where everyone else can't have it and they can. So I, you know, I mean, you know, I, so I, I.
I'm not sure because I think there was no, um, I'm not sure, because I think there was no uniform implementation, that's why we looked at having, establishing a policy.
But I know of every teacher I've talked to, they do not allow cellphone use during class.
I think things vary, I think that's why we wanted to standardize this and look at a policy, and I just want to be sensitive to the needs.
Absolutely, I totally agree with you, I just think it's one of those impossible,
Right.
Impossible things.
Somehow, unobtrusively, to introduce if it's necessary for this, for this group.
And the other point I wanted to make was, I'm hoping we can approve this tonight, because tomorrow starts school, and it would be nice to have this policy in place from the get-go, rather than waiting another month. So with the, with respect to Tammy's concern about the 5-4 vote in the first reading, to the second reading, where we did put it back, we did say they can't use it during walking times, I'm with Mike in thinking that that should supersede anything that was done in the first reading. Those weren't votes, those were consensus at the time, but then things changed, that's why we have three readings. So I'm hoping we can move forward and get this voted on tonight.
Mr. Ross?
Yeah, in elementary and middle school students, I've had a couple of parents call me about it, and we're talking first graders, and they have what looks like a watch that they wear, and apparently it's, if the child gets in trouble, they just touch the watch, and it notifies their parent, and it identifies where they are, and they're always on, they're not off, and they're in, always in sight, because it's on the watch, and the policy says that all electronic devices may not be visible, and they must be off. You know, I'm sure there's probably not more than a handful of students that have this, but it's there, and the, and the policy is saying they can't wear it, and it must be off.
Yeah, Mrs. Castelli?
Just in response to Ray, I lost my train of thought. I was going to say, I know Dr. Menzo had indicated that this is going to be a difficult policy to adhere to in every aspect of what's here, but we want to at least let it be known, this is our desire. If a kid's wearing a watch that has the technology that you're talking about, I, you know, there's only so far we can go with it. This is our best attempt at saying, this is what we want to see in our schools, and hopefully, most kids will adhere to that, but we're not going to be able to be 100% perfect with it.
Mrs. Lator, I just want to go back around, so are we comfortable from the second read, because there seems to be differing opinions, the second, this, this, our updated policy reflects as what we took consensus on after the second read, that's, I guess, my question?
Correct, and the shade that you see on the, this read, it are those changes that were made from the second read to now.
Yep.
So I do, you know, as I shared, I'd have to go back and look at my notes, and, and re-watch the meeting to determine from first to second, because I just, I honestly, I can't recall.
Yep. Did you have a question, Mr. Reynolds? Okay, any other comments or questions from the board? So I'll put it out to board members, if there's a desire to put this, to make a motion to move this forward, I'm going to need that.
I'll make a motion that we approve the student electronic device policy number 5131.81.
Second.
I have a first and second, any further discussion? Yes, Mrs. LeVack?
What was the, could we go one more time over the discrepancy between the first and second read, what we think is missing, or was...
I don't think, I don't think anything is missing, it was a change of, for the high school students, I believe, originally, we...
Was lunch and passing time?
Well, that's, that's the way it reads now.
Right.
Before, after school, not in passing, but at lunch, is when they can utilize their phones, but not during passing. And I think the first read, we said passing, and we changed that to not include passing in the halls. Am I saying that? I see heads nodding up and down, so I'm assuming in the affirmative, that's, that was the change that we made.
We changed, but there wasn't discussion about it.
Well, this is, this is what the time's for. You know, I, I mean, we did discuss, if it wanted to be discussed, that opportunity was available to board members at the second read. If we didn't, then board members didn't have anything they wanted to discuss about it, and that's fine, too. That's what we're doing right now as well, so that's, I'll take my cues from you guys on that. So I don't, yes, Mr. Votto?
If you read, I think where the, it's covered, that they don't use it during passing time, is on page two, number two, correct?
Yes.
It says, it is not activated at all through the instructional day, and then that's, the next line says, except for during lunch.
Well, it says before and after the school day, and during lunch, or in an emergency situation.
So I think that implies not during passing time.
Right.
Yeah.
Agreed. Any other discussion?
I guess the issue to ask is, is, does Mrs. Rochio want it to be used during passing time? Is that the issue here?
I agree that, well, I, I voted yes, that it could be used during passing time at the high school, and I said no for middle school. So, you know, I'm still of that mindset. I also do have concern about special ed students and 504 students having to self-identify previously. Any student can have a phone in the classroom, and if the teacher allowed you to take a snapshot of what your homework assignment was, you could do that. If you needed to take out your phone, and you wanted to electronically enter in an assignment due date, and the teacher allowed it, you could. Having the phones turned off for the entire day, or even left in the locker, will really make a difference for the students who use the technology for those reasons, and, and I fear both sides of it. The students who do self-identify and want to use that, we know that special ed students are two to three times more likely to get bullied. That could lead to more bullying. I also fear for the students who don't want to self-identify. It goes both ways, it's going to be different now if students are not allowed, and I know we've said, this is a very difficult policy to even enforce, but if students are not allowed to even have their phone on, or even on them, it will be a significant change.
First, Mrs. Castelli, and then Mrs. Purcell.
So I was not under the impression they couldn't have it on them, it can't be visible, but they can have it on them, it could be in their backpack, it could be in their pocket. And also, teachers could grant permission to do the, you know, snap your, if you wanted to snap the assignment, go ahead and do it now, or whatever, that's, that, they do have the right to, or the authorization to allow that, so I think that should remedy that situation.
You can't carry backpacks in middle school.
Oh, well, their pocket, or wherever they would carry it normally, you know.
Mrs. Purcell?
I think I was going to refer to the same thing, on page two, if you go down, the second paragraph, A says, permission is granted by administrator, teachers, school staff to power it on and use it. So it is there.
That's what I was going to say.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, so we've got a motion to approve, and the only, the only other thing I would make reference to is if we don't approve this, we are going to approve something at some point, and that, that does add a burden for middle schoolers predominantly, the middle school administration, in that if we're changing the policy after the school year begins, it's not insurmountable, but it adds, it adds a wrinkle, and a challenge for administration to say as of, you know, October 1st, or September, you know, when we do approve, whatever it is we approve, that, that's a departure for them, that they have to enforce. Again, not insurmountable, but just something to consider. Yeah, Mrs. Rochio?
But we would just pass this tonight, and then it can't be enforced till we have a regulation anyway.
That's not, that's actually not the case, we can, we can put it into effect as soon as we approve this, with the regulation to follow after that.
So would there be progressive discipline and actions taken against students who don't follow this? Because we don't have a regulation of what that would be for consistency throughout the district.
Right, I mean, we would have the regulation in place by the end of September, is it? Or what do you think?
It would be the end of October.
The end of October, okay.
And it would take some time, quite honestly, even with, if you decided to approve this policy this evening, there is work to be done within the schools to transition students from what they're used to in prior years, to where we're going. And so having that conversation with building admin, both at the high school, middle school, they, they need to start to ease, ease that in. So if you chose to approve this the way it stands, they have the opportunity to work with their students over the month of September and October, and then when the regulation becomes approved at the final read at the end of October, they have done two months' worth of work to transition kids, and then they have the progressive, you know, steps for consequences within the regulation. So either way, as, you know, Mrs. McKay said, it's not insurmountable if you choose not to approve this evening and go back, and I can put it on the Instructional Committee agenda for next week to further discuss it, and have the answers of the questions that were raised this evening, or you can approve the policy this evening, they would work with their schools over the next two months to get them ready, and then when the regulation is finally approved, you know, through school-wide meeting, communication, they would have that in place, and have already done kind of all the prep work to get students used to the change.
Anything? Okay, yes, Mrs. LeVack?
Just one other thing, and in, in looking at that preparation for September and October, that would include meeting with the PTAC, the system-wide PTAC, and talking about this...
They have the opportunities at open house, you know, open houses are generally in the month of September, you have PTO, PTAC meetings, faculty meetings, student assemblies, there's lots of opportunities to kind of discuss where this policy is going, and it is, it's a change. So there is always that, that need to be, strong in your communication, to give kids time to kind of come to terms with it, and then, you know, having a regulation come on board in October would, would give them enough time to understand and comprehend the changes, have some reminders, because everyone's going to need reminders, and then have the regulation go in place.
So it's kind of almost like a grace period?
Yeah, yeah, that's a great way of putting it.
Mrs. Castelli had it, not me.
Okay.
I just articulated it, hey, I give credit. Mr. Votto? Okay, yes, Mr. Ross? Oh, okay.
Well, my only concern is, is we're getting this, this, this policy, and the policy says they shall be turned off and not visible for the day, and now we're talking about, down the road, we're going to change it a little bit.
Why did, why are you getting that idea?
Well, special ed students can take it out, take a picture of a society.
Well, that, there's always going to be accommodations.
But that's in the policy anyways, so while generally, they should be turned off and kept out of sight, there are three, there are three things listed on page two that provides an opportunity for all students to utilize it under a teacher's direction, or through their 504 IEP, or in an emergency. So, you know, it doesn't state that they have to be in the backpack in the locker, because most kids probably wear it, to be honest, in their pockets, and it gives the opportunity, if there's something going on in the classroom, to utilize it if it's pertinent and necessary, and, you know, reasonable. It's, it's up to the teacher.
Thank you.
It, it just provides a little bit of flexibility for everybody, both student and staff.
As long as we have the flexibility.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, Mr. Votto?
Yeah, I, I just want to remind us all why we're doing this, you know, there's, there, there's too many opportunities for children not to pay attention in class, and normally, and now to have a phone on them, and let's face it, kids are kids, and they're going to be like this under the desk, that happens, and during lunchtime, we wanted that, we wanted children to be more social, and interact with each other, instead of sitting there on a Chromebook or on a telephone. I think we have to just take a step back and think of all the good things this is going to do. Yeah, there are going to be a few wrinkles here and there, but I think, as Mrs. Lator was trying to say, we, we ease into this, just like anything else we do that's new in a classroom, or in a school, there's always some new rule that comes up. You know, we can have, I know at one PTAC meeting, the last one, I believe, somebody mentioned organized recess, now just imagine if we did that. You know, and there were some people who sat there and said, no way, we want our kids to go out there and have fun, but let's say that did become a rule, I mean, you know, organized recess, that was going to take a time to be eased in, and how, to make sure kids no longer play anything they want. So I, I don't think this is so unusual, is one thing I wanted, I wanted to say, and number two, to just remind ourselves why we even came up with this policy, and we have, we all have spent a lot of time discussing this, and the committee has spent a lot of time going over this, debating, Mrs. Castelli was tough, let me tell you, but, so, you know, I just wanted to say that, thank you.
Sure, yep, Mr. Ross?
Chromebooks aren't included in this, not correct on that, because they use...
I'm sorry?
Chromebooks are used in their classrooms, so they're not required to be turned off.
No, the district provides Chromebooks for all of the middle school students, they don't go home, but they're provided to them each day, and at the high school level, they are one-to-one at this point, students have them in class, and they take them home to do their assignments.
And they're on during class, and that's, okay, thank you.
When needed, yes, when needed.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Reynolds.
Just for clarification, so let's say tonight we vote, and we approve this, right, but we don't really have the regulations in place, right, and I know that we're going to be easing them in, so what happens over the next month, two months, if a student does not follow this? What are the consequences?
At this point, I would, I would, I would imagine, building principals would continue kind of the same thing, have conversations with the students, remind them of the policy, have conversations with the families, remind them of the policy. You know, no principal is going to go in and, you know, just the first time, sorry, take the phone and take it away, because they recognize that this is a change. So in, depending on what the will of the board is this evening, I will communicate with the building principals of middle school and high school tomorrow, to give them a course of action over the next two months.
So we would give them direction?
That's that grace period that we were kind of talking about.
Yeah, because my, my other concern, I, just a minor, it's got to be brought up, is the consistency.
Yep.
You know, what's going on at Lyman Hall, what's going on at Sheehan, you know, and, because people talk.
Of course, of course, yeah.
You know, Pat, to, in relation to that, it's funny, recently, I had an, I had an opportunity to go online and take a look at one of the middle schools, if there was a discipline policy. As a former educator, the school had a discipline policy, it listed every infraction a child can make, and what the consequences would be. If you, if you did this during detention time, the consequence was an in-school suspension, or a two-day detention. We don't have that. So it is, right now, we have things that are left to the discretion of the principal. I mean, really, take a look at the, at the school's webpage, and you'll see there's no discipline policy. I don't know if, if it's that way in both middle schools or high schools, I just know one middle school has that. So I guess my point to you is, as Carrie said, too, the principal, I guess at that time, will make a decision, I think once you have a meeting with all the principals, if this policy were to get passed without a, a regulation, I think they would know how to handle it, because right now, they are handling many things, and it's up to the discretion of that principal. If the infraction, depending, even if the infraction in another school might seem trivial to the other principal, maybe it isn't, it's their school, they make the rules. I personally think it should all be written down, but my point is, you know, it, right now, it is left up to the principal with certain things, so I don't think this will be anything different. Thank you.
Okay, with that, so we, just to remind everybody, we have a motion in a second, and it is to approve this policy as it stands, as written, I should say. So at this point, I'm just going to ask, Mrs. LeVack, could we do a roll call?
Mrs. Castelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Corcel? Ms. LeVack?
Yes.
Mrs. Purcell?
Yes.
Mrs. Rochio?
Mrs. Rochio?
No.
Mr. Reynolds?
No.
Mr. Ross?
No.
Mr. Vado?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes five to three?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, item nine, correspondence. Mr. Reynolds, you're up.
Yes. First, a gift. The Board of Ed, Wallingford School District, would like to thank the Wallingford Public Library for the donation of nine study desks. This donation was made to the Wallingford School District, valued at $675. We also received the following thank you notes from the Roy Bergeron family, hopefully I get this one, the Morgillo family. Also, we received a thank you from Beth Rhonda and the Inglese family. Also Denise, Jim, and Matt Yamasash? Gamash? I'm sorry for, gamash, thank you. And also, we received a thank you note from the central office staff for supplying a lunch last Wednesday.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Item 10, committee reports. Aces?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. We did not have a meeting this month, however, next month, in September, we will have our meeting take place at the new Leader Hill facility. So I'm anxious to report on that at our next meeting.
Great, thank you. School-to-career Business Think Tank, I don't know if we have no meetings, obviously. PTAC update, none, obviously summer mode, I assume, I shouldn't speak.
The first meeting is in a few weeks.
Yeah, okay, very good. Plan of conservation, Mr. Reynolds? Yeah, I know, no.
Oh.
I know food service, obviously, we're, no committee's been meeting, so that's all good, that'll kick in in the fall. And then, Mr. Deptula, you have done nothing about window replacement, so you bring nothing to the table on that.
You're a fan.
Update us how we're doing.
Okay, we have reached a stage where I can say everything is substantially complete. The remaining items at Lyman Hall, there was one window that wouldn't fit properly, so that's been, temporary panels been put in place. There's some break metal that needs to be done. And we made a decision to install new blinds as opposed to using the old ones, because there were five or six different types in different stages of repair. So we made that decision, and I do not have that delivery date. We do have some temporary blinds in place in critical areas, and we can add more if need be. But we did not want to use our labor, our available labor, to install those old blinds. It's a fresh start, we got fresh windows, I really wanted to get the new blinds in place. At Highland, we have three windows in utility areas that did not fit properly. Those are being remanufactured right now. In the meantime, those windows have been replaced with aluminum insulated panels until they can be delivered to the job site. The, they are not in classroom areas, and I don't think they affect the students or teachers at all. The, also, what was caulking and break metal closures, the break metal closures are basically like wood window trim at your house, they are to cover up the joint between the window and the wall. So those few things are still needed. We can, I believe we can expect to be doing final punch lists probably by the end of September. And it went very smoothly. I really am very impressed with the installers that did the installations at both schools. The quality of work is superb. I'm not easily impressed, but these guys did a phenomenal job. I don't know if they're both from the same union, or where do they come from, but they, they really did a nice job.
Great. Yeah, and you know what, I just want to take a second on behalf of the Board of Ed, Mr. Deptula, and say thank you. Where some of our schools were in this process even just four or five days ago versus where we are today is, in some aspects, night and day. And, and I know you over, you were just on top of them, you oversaw it, you made sure that, you know, everything was going smoothly and, you know, without your leadership, you know, who knows, it might have still been done on time, but really, really appreciate all your hard work and making sure everything was ready on time to open our schools and make sure our schools look great for our, for our faculty and our students. And also, I know, Mr. Barone, you were at our, at our schools, also managing and overseeing, so both of you, thank you so much for that particular commitment. And I know it's not easy, so thank you, thank you for that. Okay, old business. I do not believe we have any instructional committee. Mrs. Purcell?
Yes, 12.1, approval of acceptance of resignation. I make a motion that the Board of Education accept with regret the resignation of Jessica Adams effective June 30th, 2019. Jessica Adams has been a part-time social worker since October 2018.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you so much. Item 13, Operations Committee, Mrs. Levesque?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This item is the approval of the 2019-2020 tuition rates for out-of-district students. I make a motion that the following 2019-2020 tuition rates be approved for out-of-district students. Elementary, $12,070. Middle, $12,739. High, $14,333.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Item 14, new business. I do not believe we have any. Item 15, Administration Port, Mrs. Latour?
So I do just have a few things. We had a very successful culmination of our Summer STEM series last Monday. I want to thank Kate O'Donnell and Kristy Medancy for putting together all of the different activities for the students to participate in. We had a lot of different companies come in from Wallingford to show the people that attended this event over at the Oakdale. I know it's called something different, I'm sorry.
Well, no, it is the Oakdale.
I will always know it as the Oakdale. But Tim Ryan and Joe Mira from the Economic Development Commission worked with local companies. They came in to display the different products that are made in Wallingford and talk about them and do little experiments with the kids as well. So the kids had a great time, families had a great time. It was really a very, very nice event. The Australia chip that we went on the last, in August, was amazing. The eight students had a terrific time. We were able to really see a lot of different opportunities with STEM at Swinburne University and the University of Sydney. They will be doing a presentation to the board, either in September or October, we're still getting sports schedules coordinated. But I really look forward to having them come and talk about, not only the things that they learned about Australia in general and the, and the cultural aspect of it, but how they are taking in that and applying it to their capstone project and where they're going with it educationally. I also do want to just state that the maintenance department, both the building custodial staff and the district maintenance staff, under Mark's direction, has done an amazing job this summer. It is not easy to do everything that needs to be done in a very short window. And this summer, while we did have 10 weeks, which seems long for summer, it is not long to completely clean and clear out the buildings, to lay new tile floors, replace windows, wax everything, and do all of the upkeep. And they did it, they did it with a smile, even when it was really long days. So I do want to thank them very much. All of our certified staff returned last Thursday. Thursday and Friday were days that were filled with different PD opportunities. I did share that with the Board of Ed in the Friday memo that went out, so hopefully you had a chance to, to review all of those things. And tomorrow, we start school. It's one of my most favorite days of the year, having students re-enter the buildings, they breathe such life into the buildings. And while it will be a very, very busy day, filled with smiles and maybe a few tears, I wanted to wish, and I know I speak on behalf of Danielle as well, a wonderful start to the school year for all of our families and our staff, and especially our students.
Great. Actually, I want to echo that sentiment. On behalf of the Board of Ed, I hope all our families have a great start. Our families, as well as our staff, have a great start to the new year and things go really smoothly for everybody. And also, I just want to take up one last thank you to our central office staff. Obviously, with Dr. Menzo being out, everybody has just kicked it into overdrive and everybody's commitment and working hard and filling the gaps. This Board of Ed clearly knows how everybody's just band together at central office and have done a yeoman's job and doing a super-duper job. So we really appreciate that, and I just wanted to end the meeting with that final, final thank you for everybody's commitment. It means a lot to this Board of Ed. So I'll wrap things up with announcements. Tuesday, September 3rd, can't believe I'm saying September, is our Instructional Committee meeting at 6:30 at our Board of Ed conference room at 100 South Turnpike Road. Then, Monday, September 9th, is our Operations Committee meeting, also 6:30, 100 South Turnpike Road. And finally, our September televised meeting here at the Robert F. Puriessie Town Council Chambers, 6:30 on September 23rd. And with that, this meeting is adjourned. Have a great evening, everybody.